Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, September 25th, 2006. It's on or about 7:00 PM this evening. City Council is meeting in a series of committee meetings. Our agenda shows the first meeting is finance and personnel. We're going to skip over that one since the chair is running a little bit late. We'll be here shortly. We'll go straight on into our city services committee. Its chair is Nancy Bane.
Thank you. I thought you were going to say something.
No.
Oh, just something.
That's enough.
Okay, I thought there was something profound.
Oh, no, just that.
We have a very small agenda. Two miscellaneous in the alarm system. Hand out what you all have. The origin of this is that I was talking with Teresa Carter down at the code office, code and all the rest of that stuff, asking her how could we, how did she see it? Could it be improved? We have people who have those placards up that they're protected by thus and so. And we've been charging them a certain amount of money. And then we have a lot of false alarms. And I read in the paper about how we need to upgrade the alarm system. So Teresa started, Debbie helped a lot. They had one. We sent it on then to the two chiefs and the mayor. And so this has been through both of them. And I met with them last week. I met with the mayor last week. And this is basically a revision in the context. I mean, the basic assumption is that this is a work in progress, which is always the case in things we do. We're going to go to a system whereby the alarms are registered, but the cost is accrued from the, from the false alarms. And that's probably, other than just taking a quick look at the definitions, one of the things we've done in C is we've added state agency. And I think you know what that means. That means Ohio University. So we're adding that to it. I hope that doesn't mean I can't vote on this. Anyway, so there it is. And then we have the alarm activation proceedings and the fees noted there. And some safety service director powers. And it goes on and says that a false alarm has the following, has the following effect. It's kind of a three strikes and you are paying. The first two are 50 and after that it's three, after three false alarms, then we, they go to 200. After six false alarms, and then it goes up to 500. So this was at the, at the behest of the two chiefs. Now, in order to assess these, we're going to have them decide. I mean, because they can sometimes solve things just by virtue of their bully pulpit easier. And I don't want to curtail that. But just in general, where?
Sorry, who's them?
The two chiefs. The fire chief. We have fire of false alarms and we have police false alarms. Most notably with the police false alarms, the panic buttons. And there are some others as well. But with the fire of false alarms, malfunctions, people who are immature and do silly things. And basically some combination of those two. Lack of training amongst the employees, another example. Then you can notice, and we, I think the chiefs put a lot of thought, especially chief mayor, put an awful lot of thought into this, and I have to commend him for that. But he said there'll be no charge or fee for a false alarm to which there's no response by the safety departments, or what's been caused by an act of nature, not God, as determined by the responding safety force. And so that puts the discretion in their hands. And then right now, as we, as we move forward then, we, I would hope to fine tune this. I think the mayor has a few things he's going to send to Gary and have him go over this. But this would eliminate some of the fees that we talked about that were assessed against people that really get no service for us. And we would hope then that after the two, after the fire chief has looked over the fire alarms that he has and decided this one should be charged, then it'll be charged on the code for now. And then if we change, we can change. But we're going to try and up our collection amount. The, the numbers I saw where the collection, the bills were sent out, eight or nine thousand. We were getting a much smaller portion back of that, from that than we should have. But that's for another time. We'll keep working on that. But that, this particular piece of work, and once again, let me thank Teresa, Debbie, chief, chief's mayor and Troxel and the mayor. We've gotten out of the problem that was always brought up, which is, oh, you can't be too hard on the alarm situation, or they might not let the alarm go when they really need to have the alarm sound when it's an emergency. And we don't know if it's an emergency, so on and so forth. And so somewhere between that and malice, and we have to find this intermediate point where a false alarm that is, in good faith, is not, should not be penalized, and they'll be deciding it, but the ones that are malicious have to be. Or the ones where they just don't take care of their alarms, their mechanicals, because it's cheaper without having to bring in whatever person would, would set the parameters on the alarm. So it would work better. So that's basically what's there. What I have, and I was going to send it forward to Gary unless you have something specific that you want to ask about. And I'll see if I can answer it.
Yes.
One little thing in G, I think it needs the word fee, where it used struck penalty. And then I have a question in section D2, the new D2, where it, false alarms do not include those alarms activated by persons not associated with the alarm system or the premises. Is that, so if it's in, if it's a panic button in an apartment building, or if it's a fire alarm in a dormitory, if someone living there, you know, pulls it, or you know, pushes the panic button, or pulls the alarm, they are associated with the premises, right?
I think that was trying, as I recall, it's been a week. I think it was trying to encourage the owners of buildings that have alarms that are directly wired into the safety forces to train their personnel instead of turning them loose where they pull lever and then it happens. So the, associated with the buildings is the key point you're asking about.
Because I guess one of the things I had heard is that there are a lot of false alarms in apartment buildings that have panic buttons.
Yes.
And if it's the residents?
Far and away.
Causing, are they?
They would be responsible. The chief actually had about a thousand and some odd number of alarms that he had charged for the place that has the most panic buttons.
Wow.
So he had already billed them for that.
Okay.
And so it's, you know, there's, there's a fine, fine line here. And all I've heard for a number of years is we can't not let them raise an alarm if it needs to be raised. But then on the other hand, we need to charge them if it's, if it's a lack of training or a lack of care for the equipment or whatever else. Okay.
Nancy?
Bojinka.
Yeah. On new D1, this is just a clarifying question. No fee for a false alarm to which there is no response, okay, by safety departments. Does that mean, I just want to understand the logistics, you could set off an alarm, call them and say, oops, it's, so in other words, if you are to call in and say, I'm sorry, this is a mistake, that is the circumstance?
Right.
Under which there would be no response?
Right.
And, okay. And do people know clearly, like how, you know, what timing that would be, you know, do you have to do it with?
Well, that's part of the training process.
Okay, so there's a training?
Which would have to be done at the site.
Okay. So is this for residential, like if I, I should say, a home alarm system in addition to these large buildings?
If the home alarm system were connected into the police department?
Right.
Which it isn't, which they aren't.
Oh, they're not?
They're not.
All right. So this is only for what?
This is for?
Buildings.
Buildings that have alarms that are connected either to the police or to the fire department.
Okay.
Nancy? I've had to maintain very sophisticated systems in a lot of different places. And this is very fair compared to what many, many other cities do. Nursing homes, as you know, have sprinklers, they have flow meter alarms, they've got all different kinds of smoke detectors and very, very sophisticated systems that many times an alarm will go off if the fire department is flushing the fire hydrant outside and calls a flapper valve to go the wrong way and set off a tamper switch. All of a sudden, people are running, you are looking to try to figure out what's going on. Too much dust and duct work can set off some of these alarms. I am in total agreement with this. A lot of cities, it's $300 every time the equipment rolls. Now how, you know, and that's probably a bargain when you think about how much it costs. Because I would think if a Hickory Creek type facility in Athens would have everyone roll, that quickly becomes an all call. Because you just can't mess around.
Right.
You've got to get everybody there. So it's a very expensive thing to do. But allowing them to take a look at things, because I've admitted a confused patient that in his first day pulled the alarms three different times. An extremely confused individual. What do you do? Now, of course, we immediately get on the phone and we tell the people, don't roll the equipment. It's Mr. Smith again. The only other thing that I would add is when you say if it's one that is hooked to your home, I had one down at a place I had in Megs County, but those are monitored by someone, they immediately, when it goes off, they immediately call you and say, is this a real one? And if they don't get you, then they call the police and they send the police. Now to let you know just how bad you can screw up and cause a false alarm, I had set the alarm on my way out the door, leaving the dogs there, forgetting that they could set off the motion detector portion of the alarm. I was running to a nursing home that had just gone into survey. And by the time I get there, the sheriff is calling saying that the alarm's going off, on and on and on. So I don't know how you fix that. But when Bojinka's asking, is this a, what happens at a residential place, you know, those kind of things can cause false alarms. And after a certain number, I'm sorry, they need to pay.
You need to teach Dudley your code.
You need to.
Well, so this, this is really alarm systems tied into police and fire. And it could be some residential systems.
Well, as of right now, I mean, you would, the people would call and then it would be between, be between that person, the agency and the police department.
The monitoring, people call.
The monitoring agency between the two of them.
Yeah.
So, but there are some people that do need to tighten up their alarm systems. And I think both, both of the chiefs know.
And Bojinka, when you ask if there's no response, what that generally would be, let's say the alarm goes off at Hickory Creek. We immediately go to an enunciator board. We look to see where is the alarm coming from.
Yeah.
At that point, the, the monitoring company is on the phone to the fire department. They don't roll the equipment until we say, we can't find it. This is, you know, because rolling equipment?
Right.
Rick, I'd be afraid to guess how much that costs.
Yeah, yeah.
My guess is it's a grand at least.
Probably.
Yeah. And so usually, until you say, we can't find it, send the trucks. Because, you know, it could be in the attic, it could be in a lot of places at that point.
Right, yeah, yeah. I think this is good. I'm, I'm just kind of taking my role now. Let's say for people who are new to it, or to make sure that people understand what we're doing here, who this applies to. So six months from now, they don't say, oh, I had no idea you were talking about this. And we say, well, we talked about it. So I just want to be clear about who it affects and, you know, what, what they need to do in order to, so it's owners of, or managers of larger organizations, plus any residents who have alarm systems that may, and that may be true for most of them eventually get tied into the police, right? So it's?
They're all tied in through a monitor.
But the monitor is the key point.
Yeah.
Right.
And notice, like Bojinka, on the last page, one of the things that was my goal to eliminate?
Yeah.
Was the $50 charge for those people that use that agency. And the agency is their, is their, acts as their advocate to answer. And so we charge them $50 whether they had service or not. And now they pay their equipment, they pay their, their agent, and the agent deals with the police department, or the fire department, or both. But that charge is eliminated.
Okay, so if?
And we have very few.
Right. So if you have an alarm system, you had to pay the city $50.
Right.
Now we're eliminating the $50 fee.
Unless there's, because we were doing nothing but making, keeping a list.
Right. Okay, so that's interesting. And then, and then it's a matter of understanding how to make sure that your alarm system's up to date and you're not getting, you're not getting false, false ones.
And the, and the police chief will take care of the police alarms and the fire chief will take care of the fire alarms. And we'll assess them and decide which ones we should be charging. Just trying to make sure it's fair and equitable. And then we'll make sure we collect, collect those fees that I leave. So, any other points? Has to go through Gary. The state agency part is important. It took a while. Again, I'd like to thank the two chiefs and Teresa Carter and Deb Walker for helping with this.
So are they going to have training or have some point at which there's training if people need it?
I don't, I think it would have to be by the alarm company because each of them is unique and different, don't you think? I mean, I can't imagine that there's one size fits all. It would be unusual. Two, in two small things, one is small and one might be slightly bigger. The police community dialogue happened last week. And I already had an email on the weekend. And what they would, they had a, what they called a healthy and lively discussion. And in the small groups, they had an idea that they thought they'd like to float. And I already asked Debbie to forward this to the mayor because I was going to class. And they'd be interested in inquiring about part-time corrections officers to be employed at the old jail. In other words, bring the old jail back into service as a, on a basis of, a shorter term basis than a regular jail. And so this is something that I've asked the administration to proceed, or I've asked the Rick to look at and see if there's anything that could be going on. They argue that the police officers could spend more time on the streets doing prevention and controlling. And so that's what they were asking us to consider. And they're talking about the county jail. And so I think there are many rules governing jailing people. And it's a much more complex thing than just hiring someone for $8 an hour and putting them there. We all know that. But if you have anything you wanted to mention on that, the mayor's going to look into it, right? Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I was at the dialogue. And actually, it was a very interesting discussion in terms of, of letting the patrol officers or, you know, kind of freeing them up from transportation duties back and forth to the county jail or wherever they have to go. So people kind of felt that they would, you know, losing about two hours of their time so that there might be some other option for somebody to transport or be at the city jail. So it kind of made economic and manpower sense, so.
We'll get.
Hope it's a good idea.
The administration's report.
A lot of it is dependent upon how long of a holding facility you want. The rules for a six-hour holding facility are different than an eight-hour versus a 12, et cetera, versus like what they're being used for right now is a court holding facility, which comes outside of all those other rules.
Right.
Because they're just being brought down from the regional jail and held for court appearances. Last time I looked at it, I think to convert it to an eight-hour holding facility, it's probably about $100,000, just in capital cost.
Really? Because Lieutenant Pyle was there. And I, I don't know about the, those, but it seemed at the time to be more of a manpower issue. I think they were talking short-term, but.
But there are rules. I mean, there are rules.
It all depends upon your step-by-step rules and how long you're, you're looking at doing that.
Right, right.
Right now, don't you, are you, at one point, we used a facility, maybe it was the pool, to allow people to sober up?
Yes, that was a little different concept.
So we've tried it different ways?
Because it wasn't with a correctional type thing, but it was more with counselors and such. And it was a voluntary. Of course, their option was to go to the regional jail.
I bet that wasn't hard to choose.
Right. But like the police department itself has a room or two that we can have, which is certified for, I think, up to six hours. So there's a lot of times that we will hold someone there because if it is a busy evening, you usually wait till you have more than one.
That would be the Sally Porton here.
Well, I think we were talking about.
No, it has to be under monitoring by the dispatcher office or whoever is monitoring it. So you have to have cameras in the, the holding facility room so that they're all the time being monitored. And it just all depends upon where your rules are and they have to be close enough to it. And that's why the Sally Porton is used for, because it's another floor up. So it has to be on the main floor in the police department. And, you know, part of it will just be, I don't know what the definition of, and I have to have a talk to Captain Pyle, although I did get an email from him, to see if you want four, six, eight, 12, how long a period.
The rooms you're talking about right now, the interrogation rooms, those two rooms?
Yes.
Okay.
I had vision of them sitting on the chief's office, waiting. That was a flash through my mind. Okay, we'll have some more discussion on this later on when the administration comes back with it. But once again, we see the exchanges being fruitful in what they bring out. The mayor asked me, as head of services direct committee, and I'm probably stepping over some boundaries here, but I'll do it anyway, to bring up for our consideration the, the lease agreement for some floor space on the upper floors of the parking garage. Once again, five spaces to be used and for, and if the mayor would like to speak on it, I would be most grateful because I am a fast reader, but I'm not that fast. If you want to say some words about it, feel free.
Sure. A number of years ago, one of the cell phone companies approached just about using the top floor of the garage, I think, to put in some antenna up and equipment to get better cell phone reception in the downtown area. We have a five-year lease with them. It has an automatic escalator clause each year. I think that lease will bring in, what, 15,000 or so this year, somewhere in that neighborhood. So now we've been approached by another cell phone company who would like to use five parking spaces, about 800 square feet, to put their equipment in. And they have patterned it after the other lease, except theirs is a five-year renewable lease. It's a set amount for five years. I think it's $19,200 for five, for per year. And then at the end of the five-year period, if they opt to renew and we agree, it goes up 15 percent. And they have four renewal periods. Unless they want, they, they or the city both have the option 90 days prior to the end of any lease period to cancel it. We have to, of course, guarantee there's a facility there and that it is an operating function. It has to be open to them 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which the parking garage We can install a separate meter on all their equipment and either have, if AEP would bill them direct, that's fine with them. If we would do it through us, they would then pay a month behind on any power usage that they would have. So I have not sent this yet to the law directors, the initial proposal by the company. But unless council is interested in pursuing it, there's no sense to spend all of the administrative task time to do it. But between the two of them, it would probably give us, well, I don't know, $35,000 a year or so as a level. And I think once the mortgage loan, the bonds, whatever are paid off, I think we owe $350,000 on the building right now, then I would probably want to put that into a capital, like a sinking fund account. So, because we know there's going to be another year coming by sometime after it's been operating for another umpteen years, that we'll have to spend another million. I think we spent a million four on it last time, and it's just about paid off. Yes?
Are you going to talk about the whole?
I could, I don't know. Actually, so this money would go into the garage fund?
Yes, it has to because that's, that's one of our proprietary or business funds and it can't be used for anything else.
And what she brought up was the, I know the drainage pipes have holes in them.
He made me go look at them when I was giving them a ride home.
When, when Ray and I talked about this, this was one of the first things we, we thought about was, you know, to do some repair there on some of the drainage pipes and such. If we had reliable, constant flow coming in, it would make it much easier.
A couple of questions. One is, I don't know, I forget the footprint of how many, the map was just here, second go, but how many spaces are up there total?
On the sixth floor?
And the next question is, how often does it ever get filled up? Most times closed, it looks like.
It's very seldom used right now. We do not allow parking up there when there's snow events or ice because it's, it's more exposed and could damage it. So we usually close that off. We'd have to make an arrangement with them to be able to get to the access to their equipment. But it's, unless somebody wants to park up there, generally you can find, find a spot in the other areas. This, I think, would do a total of about seven spaces that would be, might be only six that are out for that. So we still have at least 70 percent of the available spaces up there on the sixth floor.
They counted and got 50 that were left, so there's quite a few left, 50.
Okay. So. Oh, can I ask one more question?
Why not?
The energy. Right now, the two spaces that are being rented, they, how do they do their electricity?
They pay for it.
They pay through, through a straight A.
I think it's through a straight separate meter, as I recall. I'll have to check on that to be sure, Paul.
Okay, just wondering, how the arrangement was for that?
Well, you could put a sub-meter in. The two method, you can put a sub-meter in, but they bill you under the base or the sub. And then if they do, then you've got to make the computation and send it to them. Or we always ask AEPs to bill them directly. I figure if they can do and send us a bill for the flashing bike light signal on Union Street, they ought to be able to figure out a way to send a bill to the company to power a cell phone tower, in essence.
Yeah. Are there any issues about this? Amy?
I don't necessarily have an issue with that. I'm just wondering, does the parking garage fill up often, like during the week?
You just asked the question.
I was counting the spaces. Sorry.
Counting sheep.
So they don't fill up during the week? I mean, I know on the weekends.
Not, not usually, but it can happen. A lot of it is dependent upon the, the weather, how many people are driving in, what the event is. I think the other thing that, and one of the reasons I would do it, urge you to do it, is because last week, the new vice president for student affairs took me on a tour of the new Baker Center and pointed out the 97 parking spaces that were for faculty or staff at the, at the building there that is open in the evenings, and the 220 that were paid parking below it. Well, that's going to put another 220 at minimum parking spaces right at the other end of Court Street. So obviously, the capacity is going up. I don't know what they're going to charge for. But if that takes away from us and we start getting less income, at least there's a source there to do it. If you find out we're full most of the time, that's probably one of the reasons. We could take a look at it and say, let's try to, you know, we have an option to not renew it at five years or upon certain conditions that are spelled out in the agreement, like if they're, the ownership of the company changes hands, it can be reviewed, et cetera.
Okay. I've just got a couple of more questions. Let's see. We'd make more on this than we would on the parking, right? I just gave you some.
Yes, because, well, it's just because of its lack of use right now.
Okay.
Sure, if these were, if you have to almost look at it, if these were monthly reserved spaces in the parking garage, you'd get about, well, we charge $85 a month right now for the reserved parking spaces. So that's, what, a little over $1,000 per space per year? They're wanting five, that's $5,000 and we're getting 19.
No, but they have special privileges. Okay.
So?
Okay, I was just curious about that. And also, like, how many more phone companies are there? I was going to say, I was just curious. You know, we had one and somebody says, well, I want space. So I was just curious what the potential impact?
Well, the main issue on all of these is what bandwidth are they on in their cell phone usage? And you have, they have to have assurances to the other company and to themselves, they're not going to conflict with each other. So I think it's really limited by technology, more than anything else. I think what the, the good part of this from the standpoint of some of the cell phone companies is the accessibility. They don't have to worry if the building's open or not, how do they get to the roof?
Right.
You know, climb up through, maybe on some ladder.
Right, right. Yeah, I was just curious.
I could show them our Belfry up here.
Yeah. But I mean, whether?
They don't like that one. It's tall.
It might be the whole, the whole top floor. It would be hard.[1770.26] It would be hard, I was just curious what the possibility for renting that to phone companies is.
Take a guess, because that's all I would do, but I hope not.
Okay. So it could be the whole floor.
If it technically would work, yeah.
This goes back to seven years ago, the very first thing that I was involved in when I started on council was the renovations in the parking garage, which, as the mayor said, ran one point four million dollars, which we've paid down three quarters of, which is pretty amazing in that length of time. But at the time, we discussed at length the fact that we needed to begin to have some way to have a reserve to repair, to keep current with repairs so that we wouldn't be hit all at once in that way. So I see this as a great opportunity to be able to begin to have that reserve fund, not immediately, but very soon.
You know, I think the money is important, but I think service for our people who need to park is also something to consider, that's all, obviously.
Well, but I would agree that it's been very rarely used, it's cordoned off most of the time, and on days when there are big events and it's clearly filling up fast and literally Ray runs across the street and goes over and takes down the chain and lets people park in there, it is not used very often.
And it just keeps it from being in another place, too. I mean, you know, out there, where everyone could see it.
Whatever, I just, I think parking is such a problem, that's all. I wanted to make sure that we're not, we're not eliminating too many parking spaces.
And just logistically speaking, as far as where they might place, like, maybe on that map, there are like six spaces, like, over in that corner, maybe that would be, wouldn't be like in the middle of those twenty-one spaces or anything like that.
Right, so that's good.
Those corners are hard to park in.
Yes, last choice. Anyone else? All right, so those two will come out, the other one is longer term. Thank you, I'm adjourned.
Oh, I have a question, Ms. Lane. Rick, what is the status of all the water breaks? They're all, I noticed. Is that affecting our budget in terms of stuff? I mean, we had three on Mary, I noticed, so.
I don't know how you got so lucky on Mary Street.
I haven't been hearing about it.
I've been hearing about it, too. You just never know on the water breaks, I mean, we did, I think, about a hundred and seventy of them last year.
So we headed behind this time?
I didn't ask, I don't want to know.
I think volume and number.
I mean, part of it is, you know, we get, if you, like, when you go down through the month, the weekly report that we send you, you'll see that it seems almost daily they're out on one water break or another, or a water meter that's leaking, et cetera. And that's why we have six member maintenance crew, and that's, that's all they really do, is maintain the existing system. We'd like to be able to replace more lines, but just take, for example, the, what, eight or nine, eight inch, I think it is, that we're replacing from Second Street down to the pump house on Columbus Road. The price tag on that, I think, at engineer's estimate was six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But that was identified as that was one of the ones that was breaking a lot. And then from on past there, much of that has been replaced already because of the expansion of the office buildings, the Taylor Motors, et cetera. But we also have an ARC grant to replace that pump station with variable speed pumps, and unfortunately, we got two hundred and forty thousand dollars from ARC, so it won't cost us quite as much, but we're, that was our high breakage area, and so that's the one that we're addressing right now. And hopefully, by the time we get both of those projects done, they'll be in fairly good shape, and by that time, probably something else will have failed.
Okay, just wondering.
Yeah, it's, a lot of, I mean, what I think a lot of people don't understand is on some of the lines, like, when we did East State Street, we placed a lot of twelve-inch lines there and did stubs up into the main residential areas with eight-inch lines, because they're currently four-inch lines. But there are projects that we've done, because Highland Reservoir serves on both of those, we might go for a mile to two miles with a new water line and never have a tap into it, because you've got to get it on out to that far point. And so you have multiple lines in there, some serving the area, some not. So it's not just, you can't equate it to the miles of streets we have at ninety, you've got to add significantly to that.
Loops and stuff, okay, thanks.
Oh, I guess I had one more question with reference to your press conference last week. Do you think you'll be sending us a recommendation to fund those two firefighter positions that you talked about, and at least unless they didn't get it correct?
No.
Okay, not at this point?
Not unless there's more money coming in.
Oh, okay, that's what I figured, but I just.
Yeah, I mean, a firefighter, you know, when I look at the budget, and I try to look at it in the standpoint of, if this grows to, I mean, keep the person up to the top rate for a firefighter with normal overtime, and we spend a little under a hundred thousand overtime in the fire department in a year for the twenty-some people, you budget eighty-two to eighty-three thousand dollars. Because it's, you know, base salary may be thirty-some thousand, but twenty-five percent retirement contribution, thirteen thousand health insurance, three point five percent workers' compensation, Medicare, one point four or five percent, it just keeps adding up. Overtime. Well, yeah, but the thought there is, if you were able to get more, you would be able to have less call-in of people due to segment. A lot of that goes back to what is the minimum staffing level that you want to have in the department. I've chosen four, so that there's two at each station at all times. And in doing that, we saw our overtime go from a hundred and eighty-plus thousand a year to a little under a hundred thousand. But there's, there's less people on duty, but a couple of years ago, it was tighter than it is today. And we were at the, you know, at the stage of saying, you know, when we had negative growth in the income tax two years ago, I think, it was good we had the reserves. And so that's why I've always been cautionary that it's not unusual, you know, if you have five percent of the general fund, five percent isn't a great margin, nobody would personally budget on that, but five percent of ten million dollars, you know, half a million is probably the minimum, but I've seen it under that amount in the last five, six years. And that means we're running really tight.
I also asked the mayor if he wanted to consider, and I think it's just an offer, and I would argue for maybe a transition person to replace, because we have the two people on the police, on, not military police, but on military duty, another officer in the police department, but I don't, it may not be necessary, depends on how it works out.
Well, I think that with a lot of that is that, as we build the budget for next year, with the correspondent pay raises and everything that's there, and some of the increases in utility costs, et cetera, that we've faced with, and that's where we're going to see with the auditor's projections, what do we think we have as more income coming in than expenses? And that's really, I think, when we need to, need to discuss those and to see if we can do them. I think the first thing, you know, I really need from, from, whether it be the finance committee or, you know, council as a whole, is the same question I asked on the last public opinion survey we did, if you had X thousand dollars extra, and it was a recurring, you think it was recurring, what would you spend it on? And if it was a one-time amount of money coming in, what would you spend it on? Because I think they're more along the lines of something that you receive, like inheritance tax, you cannot project what that's going to be each year. So if we get, have a year that, oh, we get two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in inheritance tax, what we decided the last time that came up was, we're going to bank it and buy a fire truck, and that's what we did. We got over four hundred thousand dollars, accumulated over a couple of years, and so what did we do in February? We put an order in for a fire truck, and probably, hopefully, next February it'll show up, and we'll keep that twenty-year rotation. So that's, you know, we're going to have fun doing, doing the budget here in another six weeks.
That's appropriate segue to Jim, I guess, huh?
Are we going to go back to?
Do you want to go, do you think you automatically go to the end of the line because you're tardy?
I did it first grade.
I know.
Okay, actually, we, we have a relatively short, I think, finance and personnel committee agenda. The first item is a staffing issue with regards to communication officers in the police department. There is an officer who is planning to retire, we just, we, I have a note tonight that he's retiring later than we originally thought, so this discussion might change a little bit from what I was prepared to talk about. And he is a communications officer. We have officers who will be taking the test to be communications officers, but no, not enough people qualified at this point. However, there is one person who is qualified, and Captain Pyle would like to appoint her on a provisional basis. Point of all this is, we would like to amend the staffing ordinance to allow for five full-time communication officers. However, we want to put a sunset clause on that at the end of the year. So it would be a temporary increase to five to allow us to bring some other full-time people in to fill this spot. Mayor, did you have something else to add?
Well, two points to it, I guess. One is that the officer, communications officer scheduled some surgery, so we know he's not going to be there. So we either appoint on the probationary period or not this person, or you take an officer off the street and you manage the communication. Our preference is not to do that, since we have a part-time communication officer that's willing to go to a full-time basis during that, that leave. The officer that's retiring has said, well, I might come back and work a couple of weeks, I might, no, I might just take, take, take a leave and use up, so makes it difficult. But if you sunset it at the end of December, and I've got to run some more budget numbers to see if I've got to ask for some more money for this, because both will be in a pay status for a period of time, Kathy and I have got to get together and look at leave balances and all those different things and see where we are.
So the timeframe is still basically the same due to this planned surgery?
Yes.
So we need to do it relatively quickly. Paul?
So, I'm a little bit confused, you have one retiring, possibly retiring, and then you have one for surgery, so.
Same person.
Same person, oh, okay, that's what I confused.
They just want to get under our insurance policy before they go into their retirement deal.
I understand, okay.
And can you just describe briefly what the communication officer does?
I think the mayor.
Okay, are they the, like?
They answer the phone that you call directly.
Nine-one-one and stuff?
Very little nine-one-one, because we have a separate listing in our phone book for it. If a nine-one-one call does come in and says they need the, the police, they just automatically switch it, they don't.
So it goes to a different place?
Goes to our dispatcher.
Okay, so this person?
It's listed in the phone book as the emergency line, et cetera.
Okay, so this person answers the phone and directs people to places?
Well, they make the initial codification of the call as to what type of service is being requested, call out, you know, the available officers, log it in. That's why when we're, we're busy, like, things like Halloween, we overtime a second one in, because they're too busy to keep up with it.
Right.
Should we think dispatcher? Yeah.
Should be what?
Think dispatcher. It's the same thing as a nine-one-one dispatcher, it's just call the communications officer in the police department. Only they're just doing police calls.
No, while we're talking about it, I just wanted to clarify what it was. Okay, and so nine-one-one, I'm sorry, goes to a different police officer within our department? No.
Nine-one-one is a county.
Nine-one-one is a county system. Our fire department is dispatched by one nine-one-one, but our police department is not normally. Calls are transferred that are received from nine-one, we are the backup nine-one-one dispatch center for the county. If they go down from a power failure or for whatever reason, we get all the nine-one-one calls in our, our dispatch center.
So if someone were having an emergency, actually, it might be more efficient to call the police phone number?
That's why, that's why we still list it as emergency police, and that's why it's listed that way in the phone book and all of our information we give out. Where it was under fire, it's listed as nine-one-one.
Thank you.
Paul, you had a further question?
So this is the one who's in the booth when you walk in the door, is that the one?
Yes.
Okay, so he's the one actually monitoring also the other?
He or she, now we have both.
What?
We have both, we have both male and female now.
Okay, and this is the one that also coordinates with the other officers on the street and everything like that, if I know their job.
Right, because, I think I looked at the Saturday night, midnight shift had, I think, I want to say forty-four, forty-five calls for service that they dispatched officers. And then you have the constant communication back and forth, because like, if it's a traffic spot, they'll read the driver's license number and the plate tag, they run those through leads, see if there's any outstanding warrants, what past record there is. So there's a lot of communication back and forth between the officer out on patrol or on the street and the communication officer, and they've got a lot to keep, keep track of. They'd be happy to have you stop by and sit in for a while.
I, I've sat down.
I think some of you have.
Any other question? This would be an emergency amendment, so we probably would suspend, as the mayor said, there might be some.
I'll try to get some more firm dates for you on it and see if we can, I bet, I believe it's going to be, take a suspension.
They might need to move money.
I'll check on it.
Well, and the mayor will let us know, hopefully, next week if we need to move some money to cover that.
So we have four right now, and this would just increase it one to five, is that?
To five, for temporary. And then it would automatically flip back to four.
See, four officers covering seven days a week, three shifts a day, will cover all but one shift. So that, at one shift, in the old days, we called in a police officer and took them off the street. So we added the position of part-time communications officer, what, I think we filled it about a year and a half ago. And so therefore, sick leaves, vacations, that's when we're bringing a part-time officer in, plus also if there's higher duty times we need. That's the ability we will lose by taking this person to that position. And so we'd still be probably looking at the pool of, who are asking for full-time to see if anybody wants part-time in the future, because, you know, part of the training of a police officer, like, one of the first things our two newest have been doing is, they're spending shifts with the communications officer, because you learn an awful lot about our calls, our signs, you know, just understand the flow of everything that's going on. It's a very valuable time for a new officer to spend in the communication area, but you don't leave them by themselves.
We're taking the part-time person and putting them full-time?
That's my understanding.
For a while. My question is, how does this affect benefits? Does this person get benefits temporarily, and then how does that work when you put somebody up to full-time on a temporary basis?
They get the benefits, start accumulating, I mean, they're already accumulating sick leave, but they would start to accumulate vacation time, you know, they would get health insurance once the time period's over. I mean, just, my understanding from Captain Pyle is he's discussed that with the part-time, if they're willing to do that, they recognize they're not being given any preferential treatment on the full-time position, but if they're an applicant for it, and I believe this person is, but you have to go through the civil service way of doing things.
Okay.
Bring that up a week from tonight. The other part of our agenda is an appropriations request. This actually came from Ray Hazlitt to me regarding funds that we appropriated for public access television. If you remember, about a year ago, there was some concern that the Time Warner franchise fee was going to be reduced significantly, and our contract with cable, with public access is up to fifty-six thousand dollars, I believe we mentioned that figure. And we appropriated only forty thousand of that. At this time, the franchise fees have been flowing, rate projects that we have more than forty thousand dollars in that fund, and we just need to appropriate sixteen of it into the cable, into the public access funding to cover the rest of the year. Debbie?
Were there additional expenditures that the city made for equipment in installing the fiber optic cable? And I seem to recall. And I seem to recall people who were involved with the former station talking about additional monies that were being spent. And I didn't know if that was outside the appropriation or if that came from that $40,000.
It was outside of that. That was done through capital improvements to do the fiber optic to that. The idea is, if we ever get a contract, and we've been out of contract for three years with Time Warner, that's part of what we're asking for, for us with reimbursement. We still don't have a contract. That's one of the reasons you don't know, because there's no contract in existence. They're just making the payments as they did under the old contract.
That's good for them.
So, at least to the end of this year, we know that we have the funding. So, the request is that we appropriate that additional $16,000. And I don't know, I don't know what the timing on that is, so I'll find that out by next meeting. Kathy, do you know where we are? Would we need to suspend on that? Okay, we'll know by then. It probably wouldn't be the first reason.
We get those payments quarterly. And we could appropriate...
We pay public access monthly.
Delayed, though, right?
Right.
Yeah.
It is delayed.
Yeah.
Because remember, Sam's group had to...
Exactly, because their last, it's actually in April, their last...
Right.
Yeah, their last pay period. Okay, so, we'll talk about that. I'm sorry, Paul.
How much were in capital improvements were spent for the move?
I don't know.
It's such, I mean, we did that in January or December.
Less than $5,000.
Six, $7,000, something like that. I mean, it was something that normally would be paid by Time Warner.
Okay.
And in the past has been, since there was in the contract. I asked them for it, but they sent me a bill.
Okay.
I just told Steve Hewitt and said, "Oh, you know, that'll be in our contract negotiations to get that back." And he said, "Sure."
Okay, so we'll have this up. Just one other quick issue. In committee, two weeks ago, we talked about a request from our treasurer to amend an ordinance from several years ago to allow... Forty-eight hour thing? Forty-eight hours for funds up to $1,000. Once, after we talked about that, it was discovered that that ordinance not only needs that language, but also some language about how that, those funds would be safely stored. So, she's working on getting that language together. And if it's put together, we'll introduce it next week.
Ashley, she just sent that to me today.
Oh, sorry.
There are two parts to it. Evidently, we need to include a policy in the ordinance. And then, we also have to have a narrative, like for tax, of how we handle money, how it comes in, who handles it, how we store it, how we keep it safe. We have narratives in our office that we have to show the auditors about how we handle things like that. So, she sent the policy for the ordinance and our narrative to say who opens the mail, where we keep it, and how we record it and all that. But, so we got that today for review in our office. So, I think it will be ready next time.
Probably would be to the 12th by next... And you have it? So, you can plug that in?
I'm running it.
Okay. Thank you. Paul?
August financial reports, are they, did we get them yet?
We're closing tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Just wondered.
Yeah. I'm sorry, it's really late, but as you know, we're shorthanded. We have a temporary person in that position. And so, it's taking us a little bit longer.
Okay, just wondered, that's all. We were talking all sorts of moving money stuff.
Right, yeah, I know. Everybody's waiting for those reports. So am I.
Questions or concerns? Any other miscellaneous, Mayor? Okay, we're done. Communication?
Communications Committee, okay. We are happy to announce revisions to the city council webpages. And I gave some people, if you'd like, a copy of what suggestions we're making. Because of this kind of on-demand world, it would be good for citizens to really know what business took place and decisions the city council is making, we're looking at providing more information on the website. And I just want to thank Ron Forrest for his work on the website and his continuing cooperation in agreeing to make some of these changes. So, in general, what we're talking about is factual summaries of the meetings posted on the website, a page for each committee and commission, a map of the city showing the wards, a new welcome page with some updated photos, and official minutes to be posted and archived. And I believe we're still working on how to do that, but doing that. And then, as we resume our conversations with council, you know, the minutes to be posted there. And then, update the ordinance pages. And so, in general, just provide more timely briefings on what city council's issues and activities are. And so, does anybody have any questions or comments or...
How do we get a cheerful picture?
You're happy now. Actually, I think there are times at these meetings that we all smiled. And so, what we're going to do is ask Ron or Scott appropriate party to find a picture that has us looking...
Follow you around for 12 days.
Look, look, every one of us.
I was me, love me.
Yep, okay.
Okay, everybody smile right now. We can mark this time right now. One, two, three.
And I just want to say that to help us do this, we have a student from the School of Journalism, Tori, who's going to help with the minutes and, oh, not with the minutes, excuse me, because that's an official capacity, but with reporting on the meetings. Oh, and then the other piece of information is for committees and councils, et cetera, commissions, that Debbie Walker will kind of serve as the ultimate kind of editor. And I will be working with her. So, for things that maybe commissions or commissions want on the website, if they submit that to us, and then we'll kind of put it in order. And Ron will post it. Yes?
I sent some comments back to you when you circulated this among committee members. I'd like to go ahead and share those with folks.
Okay.
I'm not sure if we've heard from Ron anything about bandwidth and all of that, if we really need a page for each council member. I kind of feel like the little thing for each of us on that one page is enough. So, if there's any issue in terms of the space that's taken up on the city's website. And I also, it's maybe a question more for the law director, but this number-one factual summary of meetings, I don't understand how that's different from minutes. And I don't know whether we're creating an additional burden in terms of open records that we're then required to keep and whether, if there's a difference in between the factual summary and the minutes, what kind of problems we may be creating for the city. I would think that if we're publishing a document that is the proceedings of the meeting, there should probably just be one.
Okay, well, actually, with, and I appreciate your bringing these up. First, I'll deal with the one. In terms of a page per, that is really just an opportunity for citizens to kind of see who their council people are. And it is my understanding that it's not really going to take up that much space on the website. In terms, and that is optional. So, if a council member chose not to have a little bio and photo in a page, that's certainly up to them. It's not a requirement. And they're not intended to be interactive. It's not a blog. It's just information for people to kind of understand who their council people are, if they're new to town or who, other, just their interests and their bios. Now, in terms of the factual summaries, I may turn this over to Debbie Walker, because you did check with Gary Hunter in this regard. So, would you like to maybe respond to this?
The law director said that it would be okay if one of, someone from the legislative body would review those.
Before they're posted?
Summaries before they're put up on the website.
And they wouldn't be minutes in a staff?
No.
They would be separate. They would be like a newspaper.
Yes, but shorter.
But shorter.
That's what I was going to say. I know in the messenger, they just print that little thing of just a quick summary of what's happened. That's not unlike what we're talking about, is my understanding.
Yeah, and I think that the local newspapers do a really good job. However, as in any, as in any, you know, kind of media situation, the idea is selecting what seems to be important during, for the day. So, that this is much more, it's not an editorializing or it's not a selection of content. It's a report of here's what happened. Now, some of it may be, you know, summarized and grouped. And I think that's something that we have to work out. But both, you know, Debbie and I will read and edit them and work on... So, that citizens, you know, if it's Wednesday morning and they haven't happened to watch TV on Monday night, and they quickly think, "I wonder what's happening. I wonder what the city council's doing." You know, they can, you know, in this age of on-demand information, they can say, "Here's what transpired at city council." So, I think, you know, from the, this is actually, a lot of these recommendations, or all of them, are based on a report that a student did comparing our website to other cities' websites, college towns, et cetera, and basically looking at what other kinds of, what information other cities kind of had accessible to their citizens. So, that's pretty much what this is based on. And also, just thinking through that, you know, the people of the community, you know, ought to be able to access information about city council and issues and other business. Yes?
Isn't there already on the city website information about each council member, a little bio?
No. Now, there's this, there are photos and emails. And I actually went, looked at the website today. And what we're talking about is not changing the city's website, because there, each department has its own page, et cetera, et cetera. What we're talking is about the city council webpages. And, you know, I mean, yes, so we're working on city council. So, there are photos, and there's an email address, but there's nothing else about the city council members. So, it's optional.
Well, there was at one time. There were little bios, because I had somebody who I had met in England when I was over there that emailed me and said, "Oh, I saw you on the website of Athens, Ohio."
Well, your photos are there and your email, but nothing else about you.
There were little bios at one time.
There used to be. You're like, "I got Googled one time by somebody I knew from high school"
Right, same kind of thing.
"That sent me a copy of what was there." But you're going back about four years.
Oh, probably.
It is my understanding that a lot of things had to be taken off the website. We're looking at putting them back on. And certainly in terms of commissions and other citizen bodies that are, you know, Halloween, clean and safe, you know, arts and recreation, the Community Relations Commission, you know, what are they doing? What are their issues? I think it's useful for citizens to know also what, you know, the committees and commissions are doing. So, have we taken care of your concerns, Debbie? No?
Well, I had one other question that was probably more for Debbie Walker. Do you have any idea what kind of time this seems like it's going to take? Because it seems like it's putting a lot more work on you.
I guess that remains to be seen. Right now, I don't think it will be that much.
Okay.
And I want to thank Debbie for being...
Always thank Debbie.
Right, thank you for your participation in developing this. Okay, is there any miscellaneous? Yes?
Oh, I just wanted to further comment on this. Is there any way that after we do do this, or after we do make these revisions, that we kind of can do our own internal survey in terms of what kind of help this is providing? Or is this worth, if it is going to be a lot of time for the clerk, is it going to be worth it? Is there a way to sort of survey that after we do this? I mean, I think all this sounds great, and I'm really looking forward to making these revisions. And I think this is what you've done thus far, I think, is really great. But I just want to make sure that, you know, it's great here on paper, but I want to make sure that it's also going to be doing.
Right, good, good point. We can't survey on the website, I'll tell you that. But in other words, and this is not going to happen tomorrow. In other words, we hope to start the summaries soon. But in terms of the rest of these changes, it's going to take, you know, maybe a couple of months to really implement them. So, in answer to your question, can we kind of do a follow-up? Maybe in a couple of months, we could do a conversation with council and say, you know, if people are interested, you know, what other kinds of information do they want? How is it working? That would be one way to do it.
Or maybe the class that usually comes, maybe they can also do a, the class that comes to the council meetings and have to pay attention, kind of let them see what, see if that's going to, see if what we've changed, if that's working for them or not.
Okay, well, I think most of them are reporters, actually.
Except for number one.
Yeah.
It's kind of a one-time thing.
Yeah, but the map up.
Yeah, and those are all good things that need to be there. You know, I think we need to show somebody a map.
Right.
Well, we can Photoshop and get that one together.
Right, and, you know, who are the commissions, who's on them, what are they doing? I mean...
Where is the ward breakdowns? These are things that need to be up there.
Right.
So, you know, a lot of this is, you know, just a one-time thing and things that should be there.
Well, agendas and commissions, those things.
But you know, when Debbie does an agenda, to have it posted to the site when it's done, that's not much more.
Well, actually, we looked, and they're posted from like 1998 to 2002. So, suddenly, after 2002, they disappeared. So, I think a lot of this may even be bringing back things that were occurring before.
Well, and what a lot of those things are, there were major equipment changes, major, you know, server taken. A lot of things happened over time. And sometimes people are interested in things, and sometimes they aren't.
Right, right, and the idea is citizens, constituents, people who live in this town can say, can have some information at their disposal on what's going on, really. I mean, they might miss reading the newspaper, you know? And so, this way, they can just go to the website and find out. Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Yeah?
I like the ward map. I guess that's good. I think we could probably track how many hits we get on all these different webpages. I assume that'd be the first way to check and see what's going on.
Can we, Scott? Yes?
You can usually follow that. So, that would tell us a little bit of what's going on in that.
Okay.
Or what parts are getting used.
Yeah, what parts are being used. I like the idea of the commissions, although it'd really be nice for all the citywide commissions to be posted well with the idea of what vacancies are out there. But that's not our purview.
Yes, right, right. We can start with our own.
Yeah, and then we have to think about when we want to have a group photo here. Is that what I'm looking at, number seven here?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? No? All right, thank you. Any miscellaneous under communication?
When is the next conversation going to be?
Well, maybe two weeks from now, but we're still looking at what the topic is.
The ninth of October, in other words.
If that's two weeks from now.
No, that would be the second, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Wait a minute. No, it'll be the ninth.
No, you're right.
A topic has been suggested to me, but we're kind of waiting. And if you have one, you know, let me know. Or, and maybe this will be an opportunity for citizens also to suggest some topics as we become more active in communication. Okay?
Good.
All right, the communication committee, do you have it?
Yeah, no.
Okay, I'm adjourned.
Moving on to transportation. Okay, last week, when I had one of the transportation committee meeting, it was out of a concern of being contacted, which I believe multiple council members were on a bicycle concern within the city. I left it on the agenda, even though I will probably bring it up for more in-depth dialogue later on after talking to some more people. And hopefully, council will be able to communicate with some people who are either bicyclists or have bicycled in the city and don't now because of maybe complications, or bicycle now and find complications, or however. Just in terms of maybe exploring the options on what we can do on making bicycling safer in the city, or how we can sort of adhere to the needs of the bicyclists, whatever. I don't bicycle in the city, so I don't know that much about what the needs are or what we should be doing differently, or if anything needs to be done differently, whether it's more signage, more enforcement, more awareness, whatever that may be. Vujinka?
Actually, I think people have discussed this sometimes, and we're talking about bike racks. I remember people saying there really are not very many bike racks.
We're actually down one. One got, disappeared on Court Street. One of those little cactus ones, yeah. It's gone.
I was in another city, and there were these really attractive bicycle racks that looked like bicycles, and they were different colors. And on Stimson, the bike shop there, I can't remember. I was happy to see that they had that. I was happy to see that they had that, but I was thinking, there's so many, and it really kind of dressed up the city. I mean, who is in charge of? I mean, is it a very complex thing to say, let's put a bike rack up?
Give it a space.
There have been discussions with Ray Hassel about this, putting bike racks on Court Street, more bike racks.
Yeah.
Some of the discussion actually veered towards taking parking spaces and putting them in a parking space area on Court Street. I don't know where that was left. That was last year sometime. There is, there are not that many bike racks uptown.
No.
The university has probably the lion's share within the city in general. We have a few of those little cactus-shaped green ones there. Although, as I say, we have one less. I noticed one in front of CVS, I think, is gone.
It's gone?
Well, there's, there's just three holes in the ground where it was, and I'm not sure if the city took it out or somebody else did.
Who takes a bike rack?
Well, they probably kicked it to death and then took it home.
Yeah.
But most people are using lampposts and parking meters and trees. So we could use some, yes.
And there, and these things that look like bikes are really attractive. And I think they dress up downtown.
The question is space. I mean, we, you know, you start saying we're gonna put these things on a sidewalk, and then they start looping out into the sidewalk. And we already have trees, wastepaper basket containers, mail, newspaper containers.
Well, could we get rid of one parking space?
Why don't you talk to Ray about this? And
That, Carol, that was my suggestion.
Okay.
If you have access to information about, you know, creative style.
Yeah, I took photos. There, there, there were three or four in the town, yellow, red, blue. This was gold in Colorado. It looked so cute.
Well, and if somebody locally has one,
Yeah.
then this is a
Right.
a source to find out where they come from and so on, and get that to Ray, so he has it in his thought.
Okay.
One other thing. Um, I think that, also there are, Paul was mentioning to me that the state has passed new law, or new laws, on bicycling that I need to look into.
That's what I understood last, sometime, past month, I assume.
Look into as well, so.
And I just wanted to recount that your communication came from someone who called, one of my constituents who called me, who had been hit but not destroyed by a bicycle going the wrong way on a one-way street.
Right.
And not following the rules at all. So first and foremost, before we even worry about parking the bikes, we have to worry, I think, about
Promoting law-abiding.
law laws. And I do, and I asked the mayor if they might consider, they, the police department, maybe OU too, beefed up enforcement, educational component, because people do get into this idea about, I've got to get to class. And I was, once you're aware of it, you notice how many times there are people, my advising, going wrong way on, down the hill, on the sidewalk, off the sidewalk, and, you know, just basically taking chances they don't need to take.
I think it was in the evening too, though, wasn't it?
I don't know. No, it was in midday.
Was it during the day?
Yeah. And I sicced him onto you, just so, you know, we could
Oh, he called. He, and he talked. But no, it was very informative, and, you know, his, his
Could have been worse.
Had also, yeah, I mean, well, he was knocked down, glasses knocked off. I mean, well, and he did call the OU police, but then they had said, well, it's in the streets, you know, call the police department. So need to, you know, work on enforcement, certainly. Seems as though to promote
Not vigilante, but maybe more police. I always think about going
Carol?
One thing that I said to the gentleman when I talked to him, and I, I think it's important for us to think about, there's been a lot of discussion about bikes and bike rights, share the road, have more bike paths, doing things to support bicycle usage and to make it a more bicycle-friendly town. And, and I think that that gives us the opportunity to balance that with bicycle responsibility. And if we are to have more bicycles in the city and encourage that usage, at the same time, we have to encourage enforcement so that it's safe for everyone.
Debbie? The idea of giving up a parking space for bike racks doesn't seem very practical to me, because I think that when people ride their bikes around town, they will go from place to place. And I can't imagine they're gonna be like commuting in, parking their bike, and then going and doing all their different things. So we should kind of look at what people actually want.
Right, as far as logistical placement of those.
I bet they'll tell us.
Right. Paul, did you have something?
Well, to add to that, I, I think the discussion was locate, several locations. I wasn't really enamored with the idea of taking parking spaces and putting bike racks out in Court Street myself, mostly because I thought that would make it a hindrance for street sweepers, and the idea that there would, there are cases where somebody doesn't pay attention while they're just tooling down the road, and they just fall on the curb line. If there's bicycle racks out on the wrong side of the curb line, that would be a problem. But I know we don't have that many in the city. And I know we have a lot of, as I say, impromptu or just, you know, different bike racks that I just made where they need them, some appropriate, some not. It was just a suggestion. In terms of trying to do enforcement stuff, it'd be nice. I know tonight, I just talked to two kids, because one ran, almost ran over me on a corner of State and, and by artifacts, stayed in court there. And I told them that they shouldn't be riding, since I, I almost got pushed into it. One said he was scared to ride on the road, and he said to go up Court Street on the sidewalk. The other one went on Court Street the wrong way up the road. So I wasn't sure if I really improved anything by telling him that he shouldn't ride on the, on the sidewalk. One didn't listen to me, the other one went straight against traffic, you know? So, you know, and I don't know if that's an improvement at that point, but at the same time, this is what you're seeing there. And, you know, I don't have a badge to flash or anything like that. I just didn't want to get run over by these guys.
Right.
And that's tonight.
It could hurt.
Anything else on bicycle safety? I have no miscellaneous, unless anybody else has miscellaneous? Adjourned.
Which brings us to the final committee of the evening, arts and recreation. And, of course, and the first thing that we're going to discuss is we have two ordinances, O-5906 and O-6006, concerning the transfer of Stroud's Run that were tabled on the 5th of June. And it's time to dust them off and take a look at them. I have given you brand-new copies of the ordinances as they currently stand. The agreement, and I have, there's a page missing from the agreement, and that's because it's in living color. And we had to have it copied separately, so I'm passing that around to you. That's page seven. Or, yeah, page seven. Of the agreement that's stapled together. So that agreement will be missing at page seven. I also had Debbie give you a new copy of the proposed bare-bones budget. And you also now have a copy of the hunting map for Stroud's Run. I wanted to make a few comments about this, and I will have the mayor explain the colored copy of page seven, because somebody asked me a question, and I sat there and stared at it and tried to figure it out, and didn't know what the different colors meant. So can you tell us what, what's what on the colors?
Yeah.
Oh, that was Bill that asked me.
I gave you the one with all the colors. I don't have any colors.
Here's one.
Mine's all red.
Here's one.
Blue, green, and red.
And the mayor's printer ran out of colored ink while we were trying to make copies of it. That's why he doesn't have one. What's the difference in the blue and the red?
Well, I think the blue is, there are things that have been there since the beginning. You know, general public access, recreational use. Well, we did for recreation and educational use of the park. The infertility and such had been there. So it's just referring, I think, that the, all of the blue are things that's always been there. Green are things that, in a revision, we all agreed to. And red is what we're asking for. And the blue, yeah, I already said, the blue is what was already green got agreed to by the other party. Red is what we've submitted, and they, their attorneys are still looking at it as of a phone call today. So that'll either be there or not in the final draft when we get it back. And so
Blue they have agreed to, Rick?
Green, blue's been around for many drafts.
But the green was the original.
Green's a green.
Oh, oh, green is the original?
Because the one that I'm looking at, it says all recreational opportunities available to the general public like at the date. That was a previous draft. So the green was there to start with. Blue is previous changes, and red is things we've asked for. I believe that
Okay, say that again, Carol.
And red is, we're waiting on a
Red's the, red's the important one.
Right. So green was in a previous agreement that, the, the very first one. The blue is changes that we've already agreed on, kind of together and with the state. The red is things that we now have sent to them and said, this is what we'd still like to change. This is really the only page that is still in discussion. The 49-5 being returned, that's the language under number three now says that if we can document expenditures, that that does not have to be returned to the state.
For capital projects.
Right. If, if we returned the property to the state in less than a year. I just wanted to make a few general comments, and then mainly suggest that you go over this in detail before next Monday. And what I would prefer is if you've got a problem with something, that you email me and the mayor concerning those things. I, this is something we've been looking at for quite a while now. Obviously, there are really strong advantages and opportunities to, the city assuming the responsibility for Stroud's Run and ownership. There are also liabilities in terms of the expense and managing the property. My feeling is that it is the opportunity to have the local control and the protection of the property is definitely in our best interest. I would suggest the model that we've kind of taken for the comprehensive plan in terms of a board that continues to monitor this. And I will be working on the language for that. So if this passes, then we can very quickly put into an effect, put into, to effect a board that is comprised of a balance between people interested in recreation, in hunting and fishing, in the ecological balance, and protecting all of the different aspects that we have talked about, so that the board has representation of those people and can develop a management plan that will serve us well. The whole public, the media coverage of Lake Snowden has kind of brought new interest and new focus on this issue. And I think that there are things on both sides of the page that kind of come to light because of that. To the state, it's exactly what they were nervous about with working with us. Because now, Lake Snowden has never been a state property. That is a huge difference. And so you need to look at that as kind of apples and oranges. But the state is saying they don't want a private group to take it over and then suddenly decide to develop it. That's their biggest protective fear. It's ours too. So that's a win-win. We, we are not in disagreement there. And then in the discussion about some of the language that caused the, the ordinance to be tabled, the role that the state would kind of continue to have in terms of partnering in the way that the, the park is managed. To me, there are two things. The state folks are saying to us, their major concern is the laws statewide of hunting and fishing opportunities. And so they want to protect this as a hunting and fishing area for public use without charge. Now, we talked a little bit about details of other types of charges, like for camping, like for boat rental, anything like that. And they said, no, that's not, that's not what they're talking about. That's not their concern, that we could raise rates on things like that as we see fit and as we need to. But their main concern is that there remain hunting and fishing on the property. And this is one of the reasons why we insisted on having this hunting map that gives you an idea of where the hunting is permitted on the property. Another thing that I thought might kind of draw your attention in terms of the Snowden discussion is a quote that it was costing a large amount to run this park, much more than they originally set out. One of the things that we need to keep in mind is that we are partnering not only with the state, but with the university in terms of running this park. And I went through the agreements, other than seven, where the, the questions still arise. One of the parts that I thought was very helpful to me in looking at this fresh, and I actually sort of appreciated having a few months away from it, and then come back to it and look at it anew. But in the cooperative agreement with the City of Athens and the Department of Natural Resources, Division of Wildlife, there's some language in there that I find very comforting and supportive of the whole project. And it's in the second paragraph, down about halfway, says, whereas the division is a public agency whose duties include management of fish and wildlife as a public servant. That, and then it drops down to the bottom, that the fishing and hunting areas will be cooperatively managed for the benefit of public recreation and wildlife conservation. So it makes the partnership aspect pretty clear that these entities plan on helping us with this process. And that's one of the reasons why it's important to understand that Lake Snowden, Snowden was never a state property. It was private at the beginning. And so they didn't have the same level of cooperation that's being offered to us here. It says Athens recognizes, now in the, in the following paragraph, recognizes that the division can assist with the management of land designated for public use.[1706.51] And then down under A, B, and C, but Jenka, can you not find where I am?
No, I can't. I was like, is something else where are you? Is it on this agreement?
Sixty-oh-six.
No, it's not on the.
It's on the ordinance.
It's attached to sixty-oh-six.
Sixty-oh-six.
Turn the page and there it is.
Okay.
Okay. So, right now, I'm kind of at the bottom there, under A, B, and C.
Okay.
It specifies some services that the Wildlife Division will continue to assist with, litter vandalism, timber trespass, hunting signage, public hunting maps. And that, of course, is what we have now as addendum A. And so to me, these are very supportive pieces of language here. And on the very back page, it says, let this agreement illustrate what city and state agencies can accomplish through cooperative management. And these are things that make me feel more comfortable about the concept of us taking on this project. We're not out there totally by ourselves. We've got agencies supporting us. We are partnering with the university as well. And so I think that those definitely are things to look at in terms of the concerns that we've had. I also feel that the place that the agreement, that our board, a management plan, is where some of the minutia of protections that we want to keep can be addressed. More specific things than really the state wants to get to and that we just tangle back and forth over a few words. A word of explanation about the map. The vertical lines are the hunting areas, which you will see is most of the park. The horizontal lines is where there is no hunting allowed. So that's the immediate vicinity of the lake itself. And there's no hunting out in the middle of the water. But it's a little bit hard to see on this map because it's not a colored map, but you can see those horizontal lines, and that's where hunting is excluded.
Yes, the map says that the entire lake is open to waterfowl hunting. You just said that there isn't. In this part, under the.
Okay, under, then I bet you, see where those horizontal lines are, yeah, horizontal to the right of the lake. I guess they don't extend into the lake. So I, thank you, I stand corrected. You can stand in the middle of the lake, preferably in something. Questions from council at this point? And for your information, what the sort of track that we're looking at in terms of time would be to reintroduce this on Monday with any amendments? There are no amendments at this point for the second amendment, or the second ordinance. And the first one, this is it, this one page that we're still discussing with the state. Nancy?
Number five on oh-sixty-oh-six, and we have the Athens City Police Department, which is currently now assisted in Athens, providing enforcement in the areas of trash hunting season, signage, maps, PR, blah, 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 fill in. Enforcement will also be provided by the Athens County Sheriff's Department and by the Athens City Police Department. Is that so?
Is that so?
They only have jurisdiction outside of the city as auxiliary sheriff's department personnel, but we have the ability to do that.
To call her out there.
Right.
Right.
But it's not an area that we would patrol on a normal basis unless we started running into vandalism or certain things that were occurring to our property and we wanted to stop it from being done.
So if we have only three cars on the road and they're going all that distance, isn't that a bit of a, I mean, it's really the sheriff's job, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
So the idea is that in a situation where more personnel was needed, the city police could be called in. I'm sorry, I didn't finish my timeline. First reading next week with a special on the ninth for a second reading and final reading on the sixteenth, so that it would be ready for the November first date.
We're looking at a special session of council on the ninth.
Right. But Jenka?
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. Most of this red, and mainly because I know we've talked about it a lot, and just to kind of, so the public also can understand some of the changes. Most of the red, which is something that we're proposing that's new, says an educational opportunities. Most of it emphasizes education. So I was wondering what the thinking was in emphasizing that? Why are we emphasizing the educational aspect, I guess is my question?
Well, for one thing, because of our partnership with the university in terms of using this for lab classes and for research, that's part of it. And the state did not include that, and so we wanted to include it consistently.
I think one of the things, if you look at page two of the last whereas, which I think was extremely important to the committee, beginning in line.
I'm sorry, what?
Page two.
Of the agreement.
Of the agreement.
This one?
Yes.
I think it really sums up with the advisory committee on Stroud's Run, and I think what the administration feels, is the city by taking over the responsibilities and ownership of Stroud's Run will promote the fulfilling of Stroud's Run's original design purpose of combining educational and recreation, which will facilitate the long-term study of natural resources, related sciences, and outdoor recreation and environment conducive to a family-oriented, low-impact recreational pursuits. Nowhere in the agreement was any of that in.
I see, okay.
So we felt, and especially Doug Franklin on the committee felt very strongly, that in the body, rather than just a whereas, we ought to mention education because that's the original intent and what we're, we really want it utilized for.
Excellent.
And that's not just university education, that's adult education, it's.
Kids.
Kids. It's everything.
Okay. I have two more. Okay, so I just want, I'm glad you clarified that, thank you. Okay, now, my next thing is, I guess either, I have not, this is the first I heard of this huge emphasis on hunting and fishing. A, that it doesn't cost anything. And I was thinking, it's like, I'll be honest with you, like, I look at the map and I think, gee, you know, if I'm standing there in the no-hunting zone, but somebody has a gun or a bow and arrow, they could be standing way in the hunting zone. So I guess, I guess, I'll be honest with you, I am concerned about if we're talking about all this educational and recreation and family use, this, what seems to me, you know, this emphasis now on hunting and fishing and, A, why we can't charge for it.
That's how it is today.
It is how it is, and part of the answer to that is to continue fishing, for example, the stocking of the lake, it must be free, and that is the way those grants are set up. And very similarly with the hunting, a lot of grant situations are not available for non-public free programs.
Right. But fishing is, to me, a less dangerous activity.
Well, it's obviously, unless you're a fish.
Well, I know that. But I'm just saying that, that, you know, it would seem to me to, and maybe it is this way now, and I just hope that we take proper safety precautions in this with, in terms of signage, in terms of, because, I mean, frankly, I wouldn't want to be walking out there.
I wouldn't recommend being too close to there the first week of deer season or the week of deer season personally, but that's almost anywhere in the county. I don't really like to venture outside of the city limits a whole lot myself. But I think we have to look back and say, hunting has existed at Stroud's Run State Park for many, many years, and it's remarkably been accident, low accident or accident-free there. And I think a lot of that is the education part of hunting. And I think it also represents opportunities for us with the gun range that's there, with the scouting, with different programs, the firearm safety that are around. But is there a risk? Certainly. But there's a risk from all those deer running across our city streets, or I went home, I guess even as late as 5:15, there was a nice deer grazing in the other, he was there for about fifteen minutes.
Is hunting at Stroud's Run going to help that?
Yeah.
Maybe not.
Well, it's all right when they're doing the grass, it's when they get into the hosta and the ball.
As long as we're looking at this, I mean, you know, now I've heard it's like really important, as long as we also look at other programs and that we're taking this over in the spirit, really, of providing lots of different educational and recreational opportunities, and it's not just kind of a hunting thing, truthfully.
Right.
Right, but I think the trade-off, though, is I really see it from talking numerous times now with various people in the Ohio Division of Natural Resources and other people in the community that are into hunting and are in a lot of different organizations, that's their primary concern. There are not enough public hunting areas in the state as it is right now. It's also fairly important to our local economy at times of the year. Notice that the hunting, when you look at the map, goes from the first Thursday after Labor Day until, was it the end of February or March?
March first.
March first.
Yeah, it's like all.
So that is a significant amount of time that there's still many other activities As I recall, in the state of Ohio, there's no Sunday hunting.
Right, it says here. You can't hunt on Sunday.
Right, so there are, you know, it's a balance. But the state really, you know, I asked a question one time of their chief negotiator, what if we wanted to limit the hunting season? He says, we won't have an agreement. I can't get that through. That lobby is that strong.
Well, I'm just glad, I had just not heard it in the other discussions. That's all.
I'm just reiterating from talking to them that, to them, that's pretty much the deal breaker.
Right, right.
If that's not in there, we probably don't have a go at twenty-six hundred acres. And I really don't have any objection to it. That I feel that we do need hunting areas, and it's not just tourism for us or economic development. It's a place for our people and our residents who like to hunt, be able to hunt.
Okay. And I do think that your comment, that you hadn't heard a lot of discussion about that previously, is correct. And what happened was, as we continued to speak with the state officials, or the mayor did, and kept saying, well, why are you saying these things? And it finally sort of came out, the concern that the hunting and fishing area statewide was shrinking, and so they wanted to protect that in this park. And so it is emphasized more on their side than it was previously. But that does explain to me some of the reasons why they seemed nervous about some language.
Okay, okay, I appreciate you saying that because I remember the vision statements in the presentation were all like quality of life and education and environment. And so, to me, this is kind of a jarring, I'll be honest with you, a jarring kind of recognition about Stroud's Run. Okay, I have one other tiny thing. Under B, provide public hunting signage, and there better be a lot of it, public hunting maps. And I'm under.
Oh, you're on zero-sixty?
I'm under sixty-oh-six. B on the first page, and then kind of public relations efforts. Now, I guess now I have a couple of questions. One is public relations efforts is pretty vague. And now I also see that it's under the hunting situation. So I guess what I would like to see is if they're going to promote this park for us, with us, that the promotion of it not be, and this may be a sticking point with them, but not be relegated to simply promoting it as a hunting site, since my understanding of all our presentations has been that it is a family, recreation, education. So if they're going to promote it as a tourist attraction, then I would like us to specify that they promote all aspects of it and not just promote it as a hunting ground.
Well, this is the Division of Wildlife. All the Division of Wildlife does is.
I know, but that's not.
Hunting and fishing.
Right. Our own tourism department or tourism board would be more responsible to do that sort of thing. As the mayor just pointed out, this is a wildlife department agreement. It really does not cover those other things that you're referring to.
But then I would like to kind of know what that means to them.
They will just list it in their, on their websites.
As a hunting.
And other areas, as a hunting area that is not controlled by the state of Ohio, but that is policed by them. They will, you know, they will put up signage there saying it's a public hunting area where you can register. They will have during hunting season a patrol through that area, as they will other areas in that part of the state during each season, where I think there's six, or is it eight rangers assigned our general area. They will continue that on there from enforcement of the hunting laws of the state of Ohio more than, because we can't, we don't have any hunting laws within the city limits. We, they're subject to the state.
We're not allowed to hunt.
Yes, you are.
But Jenka, I would.
You can't fire a gun in the City of Athens, but you can hunt with bow and arrow, trapline. There's nothing in our code that says you can. They fish down off East State Street at the O'Neal and R Park.
I do suggest that you go on the website, the Stroud's Run website. And the Division of Wildlife, because you'll see how they market this statewide at the present time.
Right.
And so basically, that's what they are saying, that that information will be continued.
Okay.
Debbie?
Thank you. Back to the agreement that we're talking about changing. The, on number three, the new language is around if the parties agree to return responsibility.
Right.
Page three or Article three?
Article three, page five.
Page five, thank you. Yeah, we even put those nice numbers to the left so you could even tell us what line you're on.
Yeah, that all costs shall be borne by the city. Do we have any idea what those costs? This is actually the cost of transferring the deed and title and things like that. Do we have any idea what those costs might be? This is just new language from when we were reading it before.
Well, there's no dollar amount of the sale and anything, so it would just be the normal recorder fees and everything. It's probably under a hundred dollars.
Okay. And then the other, I noticed a couple other places where language was different. In number six, it just dropped the word, on page seven, up near the top, dropped the word in perpetuum, was in the old one, and I didn't know if that was just a typo or if it was intended to go away.
It's in seven.
Yeah, it used to be in six also, in the ordinance when we read it.
You like that word, huh?
I don't know if it mattered.
Right.
Or if that just, you know, fell away inadvertently. And then the last place that I saw a change, that this one I'm a little puzzled about, on page eight, number nine, where it talks about our relationship with the Division of Wildlife, the language about trash or litter enforcement came out of this agreement, but it remains in the cooperative agreement. And I wonder what is, what that's about.
Well, it was, it was enforcement by the Wildlife Division, and so they just felt that it was redundant and that they would rather have it in their separate agreement. So if they change their services through budgetary restraints or anything else, it isn't in the core agreement. And that was the way they kind of, they also took out the, and stocking of the lake because they said, including the stocking of fish. To them, that means something. To me, it doesn't mean a whole lot. But I can see what they were trying to do is, other than maybe a core purpose, they were taking out things that really should be in oh-sixty in the Wildlife Agreement, which has more ability to renew and change and addendum in future years.
So these are the things they may want to get out of more easily?
Well, that and the lawyers started taking over on things too. I mean, because that's what they're doing now, is they're running this final thing through their legal department. Gary's already looked at it and doesn't have a problem with it, but there may be some changes they, because they may go back for, as the term is applied, within the Division of Parks and Recreation in seven, which I don't like at all because it's vague, and it can change. And do you go back to the moment in time in two thousand and six that it was, or is it some other time period?
Which color is that?
That's not either color, that's what we, we took it out.
Oh, okay.
But it was in what we started coming back to us as.
They took it out, I think. So I was just noticing that it's still in the cooperative agreement, but it's out of the other agreement.
What we sent back to them. This is what we sent back to them. And we're waiting for it to run through their legal.
Right, we also wanted some recognition, and I can't remember if we ever agreed to on that, if it's in the addendum. Just the, you know, just the, recreation changes over time. I mean, you would, like kayaking is not something that we were doing on Dow Lake thirty years ago, you know? Canoeing a little bit, but mostly it was rowboats, you know? And not very much sailboats, but you have to recognize that recreational trends in what you do change. And so we, like one time, had lobbied for that type of language that they. And so we, we had, like one time had lobbied for that type of language that they, they, it's really hard to get some of these in the final legal document versus the, what I call almost the operating agreement in 060 saying Wildlife will provide us these services under a cooperative arrangement. Gets easier to change them there, but it's also probably the type of document that five, six years from now, nobody's going to look at it unless we want to sell or lease or something like that.
One other thing that you might notice is the third line from the bottom on seven, the all special permits will be issued at the discretion of the city of Athens. That's one thing that I pointed out the last time we talked about it, that we were concerned with, that it sounded like we had to check with them before we did anything out of the ordinary, and that's why this language was added to clarify that. Other call?
Couple things. One, Exhibit A is the budget proposed for 2007, $99,000. Is that what I'm seeing? Okay. And in terms of the things that we can charge for, we talked about, what do you anticipate being char, things being charged for?
Well, there's boat rental, there's camp sites, there's special events, which you can charge for the only thing.
Boat storage.
Could we have some idea of what kind of money they're earning now?
On those, on those. The answer to that is the figures that they had were very sketchy.
Don't they have an auditor?
Now, back in.
Oh, that's right, I know they don't have one.
Back in your files of all the, you know, tour suitcases worth of paper you've got on this issue, somewhere in one of the first reports by the committee, it did set up a comparison, but then you asked the same question, why are these figures incomplete? That's what they, what they had. And to my way of thinking, that's part of why it's a good idea for us to take it over, that I feel that we can manage it as well as it's being managed. Yeah, we have an auditor.
We don't invest in rare coins.
I know, that's another. Well, my, I guess my question then has to do with how we see, how much of this will be covered. I, I think you have a really positive lead on the Snowden thing, and I'd like to know, Snowden's a newer facility, and Hawking, which has unlimited numbers of people to do some of those tasks, volunteers are dragooned by education. I mean, I would wonder how some of their would compare, I mean, how, why are they in trouble? And why do, and then, so we're taking on this new responsibility, and we don't even have the Hawking College expertise to draw it, draw it.
I'm not sure I would characterize that, is that they were in trouble.
That's what they said in the newspaper.
There's the other aspect of it. Developers came along and said, "We would really like to develop this, and this would be a great boon financially."
I don't know what their 160,000 figure in the paper is, is it a net? That they're really taking in 250, and, you know, they've got 90,000 or something of boat rentals and camping rentals and everything else, and is that their operating losses? Is that their total expenses? I don't know, it really wasn't clarified by Dr. Light in any of the comments I've read by.
Well, they just got caught, I think.
I mean, well, part of that is, you know, did they keep the fish hatchery and their whole program in there? What cost did they do to the college educational program? I mean, I don't know how they came up with our figures. I do think that that 97 or 98 thousand dollars we're talking about is a bare bones figure. You're not going to get the grass mowed every week. You're not going to have people out there.
Not like it has been anyway.
Every day for a long times period and everything like that. It's, it's minimal.
It's pretty tatty looking right now. I mean, I think when we were out there, we were all shocked with how bad it was.
Well, I would think they're, they're probably spending less than that on it right now.
Well, I have a couple of.
Would be my guess, or would be very, very close to it. And I, what I'm thinking of is, you know, I'm talking about, you know, as, and this is going to be a discussion for us for, if you adopt this for some time, is groups are going to come and can we spend more money on this? You know, let's say we got 50 from the university, we did campsites and everything, did another 40, so the city only put $7,000 into it. Yeah, there'd be pressure by some groups, you know, you gotta subsidize it more. Others, but I think that the reality is we're always going to be subsidizing this. I don't think it's ever going to make money. We're not going to have slot machines, and we're not going to have instant moneymakers out there. It's, you know, access is limited, it's not the greatest, most accessible place in the world to get to, it doesn't have an electrified campground that people are going to want to come and park their trailer and stay for a month or two. It's primitive campgrounds, so it's a whole different recreational experience, but one, I think, that was the original mission of Dow, Dr. Dow and the others, and maybe five years from now, we'll feel differently about it and say, "Oh, well, maybe we should spend more, spend less, or generate it this way or that way," or somebody's bequested us $100,000 or a million, and we live off the interest, who knows? That's the future.
Well, of course. One of the, one of the questions that I have, having gone over this, it seems like there's a lack of a lot of emphasis on the deer and the Canadian geese and other things like that, but I don't see much emphasis on human safety. And I remember when we were on our field trip, it was a little bit amazing that those guys are not going to be down there talking, stopping by the concession stand, I don't think. At least that's what they said in my part of the bus. They said, "Well, we won't be doing this patrol," so they're going to be out there by themselves. I've heard people talk about things that went on on the trails and so on that weren't, that might give, might be threatening, so I guess I worry about the human safety part in some cases. Maybe that's, that's another one of those things that's out there, but wandering around in some places could be, I mean, it's not addressed at all. The deer, I mean, so the good old boys get, the 17% of us that hunt have their situations secured, but I don't know about the rest of us. And so I wonder about the public safety. Is there any way we can move in the direction of recreation with the commissioners and hire two policemen to patrol it during peak season? Go on a bond issue? I mean, isn't it about time, instead of cheap siding it, to do that and talk about a city, county, metropolitan park board and do it right? Because I'm worried, you know, somebody wrote me an email about being on the, one of the trails and people running around naked. Well, you know, and this was a person that was threatened by it because she was a woman, and it was dark. I mean, you know, I would be concerned too, I guess, a little bit, because it's not a typical behavior. By the time anybody got up there, it would be all over, you know.
Those signs say park closes are dark.
Yeah, I know, and this was about four o'clock, five o'clock, you know, and I don't, and it's, this is not idle, because I think that the good old boys, the 17% that hunt are all fine, but maybe.
Paul?
Maybe we could have a gun rental out there. Everybody could pack, we could have a gun rental out there.
Oh, God!
Pack a gun and, do the human safety factor. Just kidding. The other question I have is the capital budget, projection budget, 5% projected revenue. How'd you get that number? Any idea?
I didn't get that number, Mayor.
He's commented on this before.
What was being said is of the revenue that's devoted to it, either through what you're charging in fees, what the university's putting in, what the city's putting in, you should, as an expense item each year, say 5% is going to be put away into a reserve fund for capital improvements to it. And that if you continually put your 5% away and not spend it on operating, you're going to be able to maintain the out-of-the-ordinary yearly maintenance things to a much better extent.
Okay, so that just reflects the revenue, the budget, besides the 99. That's another.
Right, well, you know, if we're successful in some of the degree of fundraising, I had a call this past month that, from someplace I'd sent a letter to asking to be considered for some dollars, they called back and said, "We've approved it. Where do you want me to send the check?" And I said, "Can you wait till next month?" And it was a $5,000 contribution, but I said, you know, council's got to act, there's no sense sending me money for something we don't own yet. But we would continually try to do those kinds of fundraising activities of outside grants or outside items, you know, that are there. But each one of those, if they're, you know, of any significant dollar or not in the budget, we're going to have to come to council to ask for.
Are there any other comments from council? We have several other opportunities to talk about this while it goes through. I've not, I'll ask if there are comments from the audience. Phil?
Phil Cantino, 33 Cable Lane. I'm very glad that this is going forward, you know, I think it's a really exciting opportunity. Just a couple of things. Well, first of all, I wanted to ask whether it's possible for a citizen at this point to have copies of the material that.
I actually made you some copies, but I wasn't home today at all, so I didn't answer your email. I was home for 10 minutes, and, but I brought you copies.
Thank you very much, I'll pick that up. With regard to hunting, I agree with everything the mayor said, and in addition, although I'm not a hunter, as a botanist, I appreciate the importance of hunting. If you want to be able to go out to Stroud's Run in the spring and see trilliums and other wildflowers, you have to have hunting there, because the deer population will, without the big predators that used to be here like wolves and cougar, the only thing keeping the deer in check are hunters and cars. And what we would have if there was no hunting is what you have at the Cuyahoga Valley Greenway or whatever it's called up between Cleveland and Akron, where everything up to the level where a deer can reach is eaten. So it is very important that hunting be permitted. I do have a question, there were these deed restrictions that we talked about, that the Athens Conservancy Board was recommended being added to the, being referred to in the ordinance that goes with the transfer, and I'm wondering, are those in, no one mentioned them, so, and I haven't seen the document.
They are not.
The state basically on this, Paul, because we got in, timbering was sort of what centered around it, and what they, when they came back and said to us, "We can't satisfy all of our people up here in the Division of Wildlife about which the best way to write any restrictions," and they just say, "Let's be silent on it and let the city do whatever it wants," and that's, that's what they did.
Well, I'm not asking that it be in the agreement with the state, but in the ordinance that goes with that agreement, in other words, the city would be committing to the citizens that.
Yeah, I think they're still there, as I recall.
Those are.
But it's not in the agreement with the state.
Right, and, and I also repeat the concept that it is our obligation to put together this board and to create, you know, the minutia of what the rules are and so on and so forth as we move forward. And I think if we select a balanced commission or board, that will happen.
But the board, over, looking ahead 50, 100 years, the composition of the board will change, and what I'm talking about are restrictions that go right on the deed that capture our vision, and I think you share that vision, I think both of you do, but encapsulate it there so that that can't be changed by some future board 50, 100 years.
Actually, I believe that we can put deed restrictions on after we own it, isn't that correct? Yeah.
That's what the.
And so that's what, we're saying, leave the state out of that discussion, because we're just getting bogged down in legalese, and that's part of our goal, after acquiring the property, to set deed restrictions, to set rules, to set a management plan, and to move forward in a conscientious way.
So there is a commitment on the part of the city to actually install deed restrictions, which is not simply having the board recommend a certain.
Phil?
Yes?
You are aware, under the cooperative agreement, it says the city will prohibit the commercial timber harvesting, extraction of coal oil.
I don't have a copy of the most recent.
This is the table.
The city will prohibit the commercial timber harvesting, extraction of coal, oil or gas in areas where the mineral rights were owned by the state at the time of transfer, or removal of whole plants or roots for commercial purposes, you know.
This is in the agreement with Wild, with the Division of Wildlife?
No, that's in the text of the ordinance adopting, authorizing to enter into the agreement. But that's still, I think from what Carol is saying, that's the statement by council in an ordinance form, what, and, in addition to that, that what can be done, once we have actually received the deed, you could put those things in the actual deed. Now, legally, I can't answer the question if somebody will change it later or not, but at least we'll point out to everybody, this is what this council that did is want.
Well, I think that would be a very, very good thing to do.
Yeah.
I have no other comments, thank you.
Are there other comments or questions from the public?
My name is Robert Sumney, I live at 20 Briarwood. I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask in regards to, will, will city income tax be increased to accommodate the expenses of Stroud's Run, since it's not going to make money through some of the things that you anticipate doing there, some of the activities whatnot?
Obviously, we can't answer what might, might occur in the future, but at this time, that is not the intention to.
It's not the intention, but it's probably the inevitability.
Right, but any increase in the income tax cannot be done by council, it can only be done by vote of the people of Athens.
Right, okay. As far as some of the activities, will metered parking, things like that, be allowed there, or it's going to be.
Certainly not in the plan at the present time.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Well, it does speak to the concern that I have, is that in taking this over and in trying to maximize all the revenue streams that might be available out there, that you're also eliminating the availability of the park for lower income people. And this is a concern that I have, and this is the benefit of a state park remaining with the state, is because taxpayers across the state share the responsibility while enjoying the bounty of it. With the city taking this over, what I'm concerned about is that a limited number of income taxpayers in the city of Athens, whether they vote on or not, will ultimately be responsible for maintaining the park, while everybody else who's not a payer of Athens' income tax will, would be allowed to use it for free. There seems to be kind of an inequity there. One of the things that also that I'm really kind of concerned about is when we use the terms policed, partnership, cooperative management, those are not ownership terms. And while the ownership word is sprinkled throughout this document, it's not an ownership agreement, it's a management agreement, and there are a couple of council people who vehemently told me that they were not interested in a management agreement, that it was an ownership, ownership agreement or nothing. And yet, if you go to something like Article Six, where the city cannot transfer a lease or in any way assign its interest in Stroud's Run, including the minerals, water, et cetera, to anyone other than the state, that's not an ownership agreement in my mind. The other thing that was interesting is on the original proposal agreement that I have here, Article Six originally didn't contain the terms about minerals, water, or any other interest in real property to anyone other than the state. So our partners made it abundantly clear what they plan to keep hold of in terms of where they think the real benefit is in terms of money. These are things that I think people should take into consideration, is that, you know, what we're doing here basically is just taking over the management of a park, we're not taking over the ownership of the park, and I think there's a big difference in that. If the state, you know, does not want to have private developers taking over Stroud's as they've talked about their concern regarding Lake Snowden, then, you know, we are fairly comfortable in thinking that the state doesn't have any plans to turn it over to private developers. So there, again, there's no need for us to come as white knights to the rescue of Stroud's Run. They obviously don't want to give this over to private developers. They, on the other hand, want to make sure that they keep all the mineral rights, so as far as environmentalists are concerned, if they want to come in there and tap into gas, oil, timber, what have you, my understanding is that's in their control, it's not in the control of Athens.
Just in terms of clarification, I believe that the reference to the mineral rights is only mineral rights that they do not currently own in the deed.
Okay. The, in terms of costs, the county sheriff at this point has said that he wouldn't charge for patrolling. However, with a new county sheriff, who might be a little more savvy about their budget, that might change. So again, these are the things that I'm concerned about that we haven't really studied in, you know, our desire to take over this park, is that we haven't concerned ourselves with some serious what-ifs. And this is where, in terms of Lake Snowden and where did the cost come from that they say they've incurred, that they didn't anticipate, little things like that. I mean, what would the county sheriff charge? If they wanted to at least charge for gas or for some sort of minimal routine inspection of the park that we addressed with the security aspect. Also, if we were going to hire a couple other police officers to patrol the park, that's additional cost. As I understand it, what, eighty thousand dollars per officer? Something of that nature. Things start to get out of control in terms of cost. And what I'm concerned about, I enjoy the recreation that Athens offers. I take my child down to the rec center. We enjoy it. However, I also think that the city should be responsible. And I think that the city should, should have a recreation program that's really commensurate to the size of the population. And, and taking on additional responsibility like this, what I'm concerned about, especially in light of the mayor talking about reducing the budget by two-hundred thousand dollars, eliminating some jobs, or, or at least not replacing people in certain key positions, and then saying, well, you know, what's going to happen there, obviously, is that less work is going to get done. Well, you know, these are considerations that I think that you should have in terms of good government. You know, what the city of Athens really needs versus what would be a convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council or the public? If not, we will move on. And the only other thing on our agenda is a Halloween update, which will be brief. I just, my comments are yay, Wisconsin, on Wisconsin! If you read your A news today, there was quite an article about Wisconsin has fenced in Halloween. And so what that says to me is, thank you very much. You are providing a model for us to look at and to study and to see how this affects a very similar celebration to ours, much larger, but a similar situation. So I just thank you, Wisconsin. We will be watching to see what occurs. The Clean and Safe Halloween Committee has continued to work. Paige Alastre from Tourism has been working with them quite a lot. A few little things have been decided. One of the things they're working on is opening Galbraith Chapel during the evening and having various people from the music department come in during the evening and play that magnificent pipe organ that is in there with the doors all open, so that sound will spill onto the campus. And that's just one of the little things. The plans for production at Arts West are underway. And Amy is working with the students to activate them in terms of participation on the safety team and as safety reminders near the stage area. So those are the things that I'm very aware of. Vujica, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Okay. Amy and I did meet with Ron Lucas just before council and, and talked about the safety teams at length. And we hope that many people from the public will participate in the safety team. If there is no miscellaneous or no comments, I'm adjourned. You're adjourned.